I'd like to call this meeting a North City Council order. It's May 19th, 7:00 PM. Hon, please call the roll.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Rapp?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bug?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
We have all present accounted for, thank you. Next, would please rise, we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, in all the faiths, we invoke your presence among us. Guide us in our deliberations. Bless those in need and help them. Be with those who have experienced joy throughout the week. And bless our leaders in all the nation. We pray in your name. Amen.
All right, what do you want to say?
I am the President of the United States of America. In two republics, four cities, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That goes to Congress. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda this evening. Do we have any? Next, we have approval of the minutes of the council meeting from May 5th, 2014. Do we have a motion? Motion. Motion by Mr. Rapp?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bug. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. That passes, thank you. We have five reports this evening from standing committees. Without objections, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports from city officials tonight, one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, and one from Bart Joes, our income tax administrator. Again, without objections, those will also be received and filed. We have two communications this evening, one from Chad and Chrissy Hale regarding Dallas, Texas, ending the filtration of water, and one from Paul Moran discussing regarding the need for a new downtown retail. Again, without objections, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing this evening. Hon, would you please read the public hearing?
Notice of hearing. Notice is hereby given that the North City Council shall take action upon ordinance number 14-05 on May 19th, 2014. Said ordinance accepts changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1567 West Main Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of G.O., General Office District, to L.D., Limited Intensity Business District. The texts are a copy of the text of such ordinance, together with a copy of ordinance number 14-05, are on file for public examination in the office of the North City Council.
We've opened a public hearing. The planning commission has approved this. Do we have anyone to speak for or against this public hearing? Yes, sir. Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name, excuse me, my name is Mark Schilling, 1499 West Main Street with the Southgate Corporation. I'm just here to answer questions if there are any questions on the proposed zoning change.
No comment for or against?
Well, we are for it. We just feel that it would bring the existing tenant, which is Aaron's World Pharmacy, and a new proposed tenant more in compliance with the zoning code, with the zoning change.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments for or against? Once more, anyone for or against this public hearing? Would you like to make a comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Next, we have the second reading of 14-05. Hon?
Ordinance 14-05 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rapp, and Mrs. Floyd, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1567 West Main Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of G.O., General Office District, to L.D., Limited Intensity Business, oh, excuse me, Business District.
You've heard the second reading of 14-05. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
Make the motion to adopt 14-05.
Motion by Mr. Marmee. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 14-05? Hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-05 has passed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There's two sections this evening where we do comments from citizens. One is now before the legislation and one is after. If you have a comment, we ask you, please raise your hand and come forward. Just give us your name and address for the record. Once again, this is not a question and answer period with council. This is just your opportunity to give us a comment. Please be respectful, and I'll be sure you're treated with respect. Do we have anyone?
Richard E. Westbrook, 276 Pearson Boulevard, in North Ohio. I would first like to bring up Pope Ojel to the city council for their choice on this matter. I think it's time that we pass an ordinance that there's no more winter until November. It's been a long, costly winter with snow removal and the cost of paper, salt, being more than what is usual. Now it's time for cleanup and fix-up. Some cleaning is also costly. Some people want to make the square look pretty. And if that happens, I hope the property owners is paying for this, not the taxpayers. Some people want to tear up and run the square, put in new sewers. That's on the agenda, another, what, $8 million? And another project is by putting in the little decimals to turn around some of the square and do away with the lights. The lights I have no problem with because nobody stops for them anyhow. Along with this, there's talk we have to raise taxes to repair all of our streets. Along with all these things, we would like to see what happened. Some people think that the rights of dogs is more important than the rights of people. So with that in mind, I'd like to place, plead with our mayor to bring back the committee that we had once before on property maintenance code. I still would strongly suggest we make the landlord, prop, make landlords responsible for their properties. We figured it out once before, and this, if they was registered, this would bring in around $160,000 a year to pay for the inspectors. And according to the mayor, in his own words, it says, "Our job is to present solutions to problems." And this has always been a problem, and we've done nothing about it yet. The citizens electing the means to try to solve problems in the city. So let's start over again, Mr. Mayor, and bring the committee back into action. Now, the people paying the fines for these violations of codes, now, the leech on property has never worked, and I think we've got about 80 reasons around North why it hasn't been worked. The city ends up with these properties, and the city ends up tearing them down. So let's try something different. We have 40 reasons why, just inside of North, why it doesn't work. If we can, we get Mr. Sass and busy having violations, violators appear in court and explain to the judge why these fines haven't been paid, then maybe if the fines aren't paid on the time, the judge will give him so many days to pay or go to jail. Now that's going to work. Mr. Ellis is a prime example of one property. His property taxes is $87 a year, but he owes over $8,000 in fines. Now he would be glad for you to go in there and take that away from him and end up tearing it down at our expense. So I'm still, I'm still strongly in favor of inspection inside and out and registration of landlords. This has always been a problem in North, and I can understand why we're not doing anything about it. So I plead with you, Mr. Mayor, let's reactivate the committee and come up with something besides what the charge for mowing the grass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. I think at least Mr. Rose would agree with you about the winter, nothing else. Do we have anyone else this evening for citizens' comments? Again, there's another time after the legislation. Okay, next we'll go on to 14-04, ordinances on the second reading.
Ordinance 14-04A by Mr. Roletta, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, and Mr. Blake, an ordinance amending chapter 618 of the codified ordinances of the City of North Ohio to require that all dogs be leashed when off the premises of the dog owner.
You've heard the second reading of 14-04A. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Roletta. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 14-04A.
Second. Motion by Mr. Roletta, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 14-04A?
Mr. President?
Mr. Roletta.
I would like to substitute 14-04A with 1404-B.
You'd like to amend 14-04A with 14-04B to be the new legislation? And would that be in the package? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion on the amendment? Could you just tell us what the amendment is, Mr. Roletta?
Yes, it is including reasonable control language along with the leash requirement.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 14-04? Do you have to amend?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost.
This is the legislation that's been discussed for some time, that I've been involved with. What we're asking for is, in my opinion, common sense, using a leash when you walk a dog out, outside of your own property, down the street, on the sidewalk, when you're out and about with the dog, that you have it on a leash. And there was discussion also about the difference between having a dog on a leash and having reasonable control. And so with this amendment, what we have done is we've put both there. So the dog would need to be on a leash and the under the reasonable control of some person. It's really just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hon, please vote on the amendment.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-04A has been amended to 14-04B. Now is there any discussion on 14-04B? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-04B has passed. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 14-09.
Ordinance 14-09 by Mr. Rapp, an ordinance amending chapter 618 of the codified ordinances of the City of North Ohio regarding sanctions for violations resulting in serious injury to persons.
14-09 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-12.
Ordinance 14-12 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rapp, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
14-12 is an emergency, so it's only worth one reading. What is your wish?
Motion.
Mr. Cost?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 14-12? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-12 has passed. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 14-37.
Resolution 14-37 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the second reading of 14-37. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 14-37.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 14-37?
Hand us, Mr. Guthrie, a second. Hand us, Mr. Guthrie, a second. I normally don't comment on legislation, but I am going to comment on this one before we do this. I think my job up here is to try to run the meeting and try to, not really did in my opinion, but on this one, I just, I just felt like I had to make a comment. It just seems to me that part of this legislation, we are adopting money to put a gate outside here for our parking lot and give everyone a clicker so we can keep people out or, or not call a tow truck to have people towed. When we just had folks here about six months ago, having the same problem with there are lots around City Hall because people were parking there, we would let them boot the cars and we just told them that, just call a tow truck. I just really think it sends the wrong message for us to send, spend taxpayer money to do this. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Guthrie? I agree. Thank you.
Any other discussion on 14-37? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-37 has passed. Next, we have 14-38.
Resolution 14-38 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of North to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Governor's Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2014 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Funding.
You've heard the second reading of 14-38. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt a resolution 14-38.
Second. Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-38? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-38 has passed. Next, we have 14-39.
Resolution 14-39 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the second reading of 14-39. What is your wish?
Move to adopt.
Ms. Hall, move to adopt. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 14-39? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-39 has passed. Next, we've got the resolutions on the first reading, 14-30.
Resolution 14-40 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations with regard to retention of outside legal counsel.
14-40 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-40.
Resolution 14-41 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
14, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake, move to waive the two-day reading rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake, the reason?
This is expenditure for the police communication equipment. I need to get it done on time, may I?
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Hon, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
The two-day reading rule has been waived on 14-41. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt a resolution 14-41.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 14-41? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-41 has passed. Next on the first reading, we have 14-42.
Resolution 14-42 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, and Mr. Blake, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the first reading of 14-42. What is your wish?
I would like to waive the second reading, please.
Ms. Hall asked to waive the two-day reading rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall, is there a reason?
We need to move this quickly.
Okay. Hon, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived on 14-42. Ms. Hall?
Motion to adopt resolution 14-42.
Motion by Ms. Hall?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 14-42? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-42 has passed. Finally, this evening, we want a first reading, we have 14-43.
Resolution 14-43 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rapp, and Mr. Blake, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to negotiate and enter into contract without competitive bidding for the purchase of radio communication equipment within the division of police and declaring an emergency.
First reading of 14-43, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Motion.
Mr. Cost? Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 14-43? Seeing none, hon, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
14-43 has passed. That's it for our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next, we have the second, the second chance for citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Thank you. Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. I'd like to share on the topic annexation tonight. North has a population of 47,688 residents. Last year, I learned that we have 220 miles of water lines. To replace one mile of road, to repaint a road, one mile would be $90,000 to $100,000,
thousand dollars, which is quite a bit of money. If the city continues to annex more and more land, which is adding more and more onto our services of police, R E M S, our street departments, it's like an overload or something. But a lot of things aren't getting done within the city limits that should be because we're taking on more and more land. So we got right services where we weren't before. And I'm sure if you talk to anybody in the departments, they probably agree with that. They're filling in more and more additional workload on themselves. But I think that we should, on any future annexations, put them aside, and let's get done what needs to be done, because last month I provided a list of needs for each one of you, things that need to be really done within city limits. But if we keep adding on more, expanding the city, that just puts those aside and we get more problems. More, you know, we've got more roads to pave, more roads to plow in winter, and I think we should put annexation aside for a while. One of those are my opinions and food for thought I wanted to share. I'm grateful for last week, though, got the ten-three city events, the public license that Mr. Mayor Paul spoke at, and that was very informative. I attended the organizational meeting of the Student Youth Council, and also the bidders meeting at the downtown fire station. We had about ten bidders show up and took a tour of the basin of the fire station, it was pretty interesting, I enjoyed that. But I want to pass these out there about the annexation issue, and I hope you will really give some considered thought about this. Because, you know, we know our dollars are stretched, our services are stretched, you know, a ladder truck was just in an accident over the weekend, how long is it gonna be out of service? We have nineteen ninety-six engine four, so, you know, I know we're not completely up to par on our equipment, but we don't want to overdo and have more trucks red down. And I'm thankful, we have Newark Township, Madison Township, I mean, they give us outstanding mutual aid every time we need them, they're right there. You know, they're both are part-time fire departments. Newark Township, they work from Sunday noon to seven p.m., they're part-timers. So when Newark's tied up or they have a good lot of service, we call them in, or Madison for a medic or an engine, which is a great thing to have, mutual aid. And I can't say enough about that kind of situation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moran. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone for the administration this evening? Our award-winning auditor, Mr. Johnson.
Adam.
The Honorable Law Director.
Officer Sassen.
Mayor Hall.
I'll pass, officer.
Mr. Guthrie, you'll pass?
Uh, let's settle on this, President. The, a few things I want to mention. First, I want to recognize the administration, the role that they played with the demolition back here, that looks great, Mayor, it really looks great, and I think that we just should all be very proud of the end result there. I also want to say, Mr. Moran, your point is well taken, and I think that, you know, that we do need to be conscious of the cost of maintaining property that we annex. I wouldn't favor a moratorium on annexations because, you know, some annexations might have more value to the city than others, and I think you need to weigh them individually. But I do think that you need to weigh, you know, the cost that an annexation could have to the city, so, you know, thanks for raising that issue, because it is something that we should think about as we deal with annexations. I want to say that it's great that we are moving forward at the pace we are on the radios for the police department, that's really a good thing, and I hope that it all works out, and I hope that maybe with time, if there are any supplemental costs surrounding this, maybe Mr. Spurgeon can fill us in on what those might be, if they're, you know, in addition to the purchase of equipment itself. And the last thing, I think the last thing that I wanted to mention is the fact that I had the opportunity to visit the nine eleven memorial last week in New York, and I'm sure that many of you have been there, and of course, it's a very touching experience just to see it and to be there where nine eleven occurred, and it's such a stark reminder of the importance that our first responders play in our daily lives. And while I was in New York, I read an article about the fact that this week is actually National EMS Week, and so it was a reminder to me to recognize our EMS personnel in our city. I believe that approximately sixty of our seventy-some firefighters are paramedics and the balance are E M Ts, which puts our folks at about seventy percent being paramedics, and I think that's a real strong showing for us, providing good service to our city. With that, Mr. President, I will pass.
Mr. Guthrie.
Ms. Hall.
Yeah, I would like to just take a minute to thank Mr. Spurgeon and Mr. Rose for timely help with a couple of issues on the first ward. You guys have always been there with answers, or help in one way or another, so just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson.
I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things that I'm just going to comment on. The sewer separation in the downtown area, although, I mean, we don't want to spend the money, it would be great if we saved that money, that's one of those things, it's EPA mandated but not EPA funded. So it's mandated that we do it, but they're not giving us any money, so we have to do that. As far as the fees for the landlords, we researched all of that, we analyzed the numbers, the money just is not sufficient to take care of the inspections. Just the paperwork alone would take up a full-time job of trying to maintain, and also we, the upfront cost is what the huge expenditure would be, and we just, plain and simple, we didn't have the money to start that up, and we were not guaranteed one hundred and sixty thousand, because there's, it's hard to collect all those fees. We know that with other fees that are involved, especially the ones that you mentioned, so if they're not gonna pay, and the ones that are gonna pay are the ones that are in compliance And I am very pleased that the police equipment, the radios, went through, and I know we had to expedite that as a one-time good deal in order for us to get these refurbished radios that'll be supported by our current equipment, and that's exactly what we're looking for. So I am very pleased that we are able to expedite that, because if we were not, then we would miss out on that opportunity, and we'd be looking at a much larger price tag. I guess I just want to talk a little bit also about fourteen forty that'll come up for vote in our next meeting. We are asking to move ten thousand dollars from our budget stabilization in order to pay for outside legal counsel. What Mr. Ellington discussed this evening, as far as the gate in the back, is a perfect example. Do we spend money on a gate like that, or do we have to pull from our ready-day funds just to pay for an attorney? And I just don't feel that that is something that we want to do. We're basically starting to utilize the budget stabilization fund as our inappropriate balance, and that is not a good thing to do. So we want to make sure that we're maintaining that budget stabilization, we're monitoring it. It is there for emergencies, however, we should try to look for smaller dollar amounts out of other funds, is my opinion. And then finally, Mr. Moran, as far as annexation. As far as what brings revenue to the city, residential housing brings in more revenue to the city than retail. Retail actually costs the city money that was conducted by the Destiny Twenty Twenty Plan. It shows how retail definitely is more of a burden on the city's tax funds than housing. And now, that doesn't mean you can't have retail, and you want to have retail because the retail attracts the housing. Annexation, if done correctly, can definitely be a benefit to the city. Most of the annexation that we've done in the most recent past has been annexation of small lots that have primarily already been on our city streets. So we're already maintaining the street in which it is. In addition to that, I would agree with you, though, if we annex any additional properties in which there's going to be development done on, which, right now with our economy and things, I don't see that happening in the near future, but if we do have residential housing development, I think that these developers need to be held to a higher standard as far as the placement of the roads. It appears as if, and in my opinion, that the thickness of the asphalt in those roads and the new ones do not meet the standards that the city likes to maintain, and therefore they're deteriorating at a faster rate than what we would like, and then we have to end up replacing them, because once they develop, it then becomes a city road. So I would like to see those standards increased a little bit, so then if a developer decides that they're going to develop, they have to meet the same standards that our city roads have. So in that capacity, as far as annexation, I think we could hold them to higher stricter guidelines and without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Raff?
Thank you, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff, Mr. Relata.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce our fourth ward block watch group will be meeting Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at six thirty p.m. in Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. The better pass.